The March one regular meeting Windsor Heights City Council is called to order. Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Here.
Joseph Jones. Don't see him yet. Oh, there he is. Mike LaFredo.
Yeah.
Mike Jones.
Here.
And Teresa Harms.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it.
And one nation.
One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. Motion.
We'll move Dave.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is the public hearing on maximum property tax dollars for certain levies. Motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Back in.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Public hearing is open. Travis Dennis, have we got any comments from the public that we're aware of?
I have not received any.
Are there any comments from the people that are on the Zoom call? If you are. You have your audio blank, please open it or sign into the or go to the chat and we'll open you up. Okay. Hearing none, motion to close the public hearing.
Come on. David, we got to talk about this too down below.
What?
We going to talk about this as a council too? The maximum levies.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead Dennis.
Rochelle's going to make a presentation when the public hearing is closed.
Okay, okay, that's what I've got.
I was gonna say, I thought that was under consideration of it, but this is for the public side of it.
I understand David.
Okay.
I'll start with the roll call.
I have a motion by Teresa, second by Susan. So roll call Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Next item is consideration resolution 2021-06. Resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2021-22 maximum property tax dollars for certain levies. Motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Discussion. Rochelle, would you like to explain?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. I just just as a little bit of a background, this is only the second year that we've done the max levy. Last year was the first. And what this levy does is it actually only applies to through to certain levies. That a city can levy within their budget. And for us, the only ones that it affects are the general fund regular levy, which is the eight 10. And then two special revenue levies. And those two are the FICA and IFRS. And the other employee benefits. So that's actually our insurance. And these levies have actually are not changing from last year. So the actual levy amount is not changing in any way. What this does not include is our debt service levy. So this this. Notice is not the actual dollar figure that will be on the budget for the final. This actually shows $12.08 and the actual budget currently shows 1447. That could be changed, but what this does is this sets a maximum rate that the council cannot go over. So when you're setting your budget, you we have to be mindful that we cannot go over what is here on this sheet. And. Which there really wouldn't be a reason to, but that's all this is.
Let's see, the increase is 1.33.
1.22. Yes.
Okay, what's that amount to in dollars and cents?
In dollars that actually amounts to, you know what, Mike, I actually didn't do the dollars, but I can do it really quick. $35,000, $35,124.
Okay, so. Are the taxpayers going to have a. Increase to absorb that 35,000?
Yes.
So how can we keep our total levy from what it was previously? And do this? We weren't going to.
There was an increase in the actual assessed values.
Okay, so this the total levy though remains the same as it was.
Right.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
So those assessed values only netted the city $35,000, $35,124. So residential value is going up by 10.79. The city is actually gaining $35,000.
Okay, yeah, I knew that.
But there any other questions about this? I can help explain.
So Rochelle, I think we're probably going to have, I'd say probably more expanded discussion as far as when we talk about the budget in its entirety.
Yeah.
But if we were wanting to potentially lower the total levy, how did would that play into this?
Well, I would recommend that you didn't reduce any of the three levies here. I would recommend that you reduce the debt service levy if that's what you're going to if you want to lower the levy rate, I would recommend you do it there.
Why?
Because we have quite a bit of reserves in order to. To you to utilize.
What does quite a bit of reserves mean? Do you?
$600,000.
How much? Much?
I'm sorry?
How much did you say?
$600,000.
Okay, is that a a large amount?
It is. 684,000 to be exact. That is a large amount.
Okay, what would be? Your suggestion to keep in that account?
Usually it's. There's no standard, even our auditor. I asked the question to our auditor, what is the standard for the debt service levy?
That's what I'd like to know.
And he said there is no standard because well, because you automatically are generating every year the the amount you need in your debt service. So the funds that are sitting here can be utilized for the very thing that you guys are talking about.
Okay, so. I'll turn it back to Mike Jones. He maybe has an idea on that.
Well, my concern would be. If there were the proposal and the council agreed to it to do some some sort of lowering of the total levy. I guess I guess it's all dependent on what that would be, but. I would want us to have to talk about lowering it this year and then coming back the next and saying, well, you know, we need to raise it again.
Right. The beauty of your assessed values is they're going to stay the same for next year, so we won't have to worry about our assessed values going down. So that wouldn't be a concern. I mean, as your finance director, that's a concern for me every year. Is it going up? Is it going down? What's it doing? But because you're on a you're you're on to a two-year time span, we wouldn't have to worry about that next year, at least for the assessed values. Now, there's lots of other things to worry about, costs of doing business, insurance, all the rest of it. But in this case, your assessed values would would not be an issue, but what we have to remember is. This this piece of this resolution that you guys are looking at right now, this is just the maximum that we could go. If you guys want to lower any of these, we can do that on the budget, within the budget. So this is just a maximum level. So at any point we can lower, but we cannot raise it any further than what it already is.
Can we lower it after it's approved?
Yes, absolutely. If you you put you put this through tonight as a resolution and it's approved, you just can't go any higher. You can definitely go lower.
Rochelle, can I, if I remember correctly, and I tried looking through my notes and I didn't write this down, but. Your thoughts were that for the next X amount of years that you are going to take money from the debt levy rate or the debt levy fund. So that we could keep our levy rates like kind of staying the same so that we're not fluctuating so much. Is that correct? Because I thought you said like we had three to five years or five to seven years. I'm not exactly sure. I don't think you really knew the year, the amount of years that we'd be able to function, but. This is something that is kind of common practice, is it? I mean.
It is. Well, and it's not common practice to have this much money in your debt levy either. Your debt. We shouldn't have this money, much money sitting there, so utilizing the money is a smart thing to do. But we actually have it's depending on if we ever borrow anymore. Currently, we have at least four years worth of funds. In the debt service levy that we could we could keep the levy the same, keep the rate the same. Currently, we have between three and five years. In order of reserves in order to keep the levy the same.
Rochelle, do you have any idea if to answer this question, if we lower the debt levy by. For every 100,000, what would that do to the total?
By every 100,000? Could you give me a better?
Yeah, if we reduce it right now to 100,000, do you have any idea what that would do to the total levy?
I could tell you what I could give you examples of what the levy rate looks like and what that would cost the city. Is that what you're asking? So if we if we lowered it by 50 cents, I could tell you what that would cost the city in reserves.
Well, you can do that too. I don't have to have it right now, but I think.
Okay, I actually have that information.
Kind of get to what Mike Jones is saying, you know, there may be some reasonableness to using part of it.
Rochelle, before you give them that information. Just to remind the council, we're already planning to use $103,000 this year from the reserves. So that we can maintain the tax levy the same. And we sent some information Rochelle and I sent some information out of the council. I think it was Friday about the if we were to lower the levy by one mil, it would result in a loss of about $420,000. So basically by lowering the debt levy one mil this year, we would use an extra 420,000. So in total about $523,000 out of that reserve fund. And we could go the next year and still have enough money to pay the debt service. We would just basically blow out the reserves. For this year to lower the levy. Is that right Rochelle?
100% accurate. Yes.
That helps clarify Dennis. Thank you. I like, you know, personally, I like to keep. Significant amount of reserves. Because you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. So I'm not saying it has to be that amount, but.
And I mean, I I am always on the conservative side when it comes to money and. I just feel like, you know, we just went through a pandemic. We're still in a pandemic. Do we know what the the next year could? What does the next year look like? Could it could something else happen? Could something worse happen?
Yeah, Dennis kind of clarified that we're using it for this year.
Right, we are using 103,000 already.
And I I remember that, but I'm glad he jogged her memory on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments and questions?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead Teresa. I've already talked.
That's fine. Just so the additional money that we're using from the reserves right now. And to put into our budget, are we just to clarify and remind me, are we using those dollars to pay for ongoing budget expenses?
No, no, this is just the debt service levy and it's just drawing down the debt service levy, the reserves in the debt service levy.
I, yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're so that's specific to that fund and not to balance our budget. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Nope, it's not to balance the budget.
I have a question. Is it okay if I speak?
Yes, Daddy, go ahead.
I just I just kind of chimed in here. What Dennis Stern was saying by lowering by one mil, why not do that? If we have the money, why not? Have it all in reserves.
Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for a comment or an answer to that question. I'll give it a stab and Rochelle can fill in the gaps if I make a mistake, which happens often. But the council certainly could make that decision to lower the debt levy another one mil. That would save the owner of a $200,000 home about $112 on their taxes. In a quick calculation, Rochelle and I have been trying to figure out this, but it's very complex. If the owner of a $200,000 home is going to expect to get about a $540 increase in their overall tax bill. That would be about $45 more a month with this increase in the valuation. If the city were to try to take on that entire. Increase in taxes, we would be talking about a levy decrease of 4.8 mils. Which would then result in about a $2 million overlaw loss to the city. So. It is a significant amount of money when you take it in the entire portion, the whole 53 mils. And our small little third of that number is can't even get close to trying to keep that as an even tax levy. So. We think that that's possible. Rochelle and I have thought about this and even with her conservative nature, we could reduce the debt service by one mil. Save the taxpayer that owns the $200,000 home about $112 for the year. The risk though that we run is the following year. We might be okay and we think in running our estimates, we could be okay if the economy takes the same trajectory is now, but. Let's say we talk two years from now. We could be talking about a tax increase. And our job as administrators is to try to keep the council away from managing the city's money to the point where it requires a tax increase. So in that respect, it's better to be a little bit more conservative than to look for one year of relief. And I might remind the council that when we were looking at the history here, we could we went back a few years and found that there was an 11.8% bump in the valuations a few years back. So this isn't the first time that the valuation increase has been double digit.
Thank you for that explanation.
Any further comments from council or the public? Okay. Resolution setting the time and place for a public hearing is 3:15. On the proposed budget, that's a consideration. Have you folks got any comments?
Hold on, hold on, we we you we've skipped ahead.
We're still on consideration 2021-06.
Okay, I have.
Motion and a second.
I have a motion by Mike Jones, second by Teresa Harms to approve resolution number 2021-06.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is review of the fiscal year 2021-22 proposed budget. This is discussion.
So. Mr. Mayor, this is Rochelle Schell. She's going to give a presentation on the general operating budget. But council members will recall that during their one-on-ones with staff, both Chad and Dalton were available to talk about their respective budgets. And if there's a question or a highlight you'd like them to expound upon, just please ask and we'll try to give you the answer today. Thanks. Go ahead Rochelle.
And it's, so just a little bit of a general overview, since we do have some residents present. That are currently as the budget stands right now. Our general levy will remain unchanged at $8.10. There is a minimal change to our revenues. One thing that did change based on information we received after the budget was presented to council individually was that. Number one, we got some more information about COVID relief FEMA specifically. And then the road use tax was originally scheduled to have a reduction of three to 4%. And they have since increased that. And also the federal government is actually going to come in and provide some relief for road use tax. So. That's a that's a good thing for the city. It's not much. It's like $40,000, but I mean, I say not much, but $40,000 is it's enough. It's good, good for us. So that is, that's just a good positive. The local option sales tax also, they were saying originally that there could be a decline. And they have since changed and now they think it's going to actually be an increase. Because people are shopping from home and were able to benefit from that. So that's fantastic news for us. There is a slight change to our fiscal year expenses. And when you look at the actual expenses of fiscal year 21 of 27 million and then fiscal year 22 are estimated at 28 million. It's a six and a half percent increase, but that is due to the principal and interest being due on the 2020 bond. That we didn't have the 2020 B bond that we didn't have last year. And we did have the increase to insurance, which 3.85%. We did add a new item to the budget, which was a forestry department. And this is in Dalton's arena, but this is to. Handle expenses related to ash tree removal. And then we did. We did budget for the economic development funds. We hadn't done that in past years. So that those are going to be available this year in case there's some sort of economic development that. The city wants to incorporate. And then I did. I did budget the lost funds or not lost funds, the ATE funds, the 1,578,000, which I know is a little bit controversial, but. The reason that we budgeted the ATE the ATE funds is that we then at any point in the future for fiscal year 22. If council wants to use the money, they can. They can use it for any type of capital project. So even though within the budget that we presented in the executive summary. What we presented was some parks, some streets, some parking lots, a whole plethora of items. Council has the final decision on what spending that money on whatever they so desire. And you have to remember that putting it in the budget, it just shows up as two line items. We take it out of one of the general fund where it's sitting, ATE funds. And we put it into capital projects. This just tells the state that at some point in fiscal year 22, the council might or might not. Decide they want to spend some money on capital projects. So there's two things that have to happen. Once the budget is approved, two things have to happen before that money can even be spent. Number one, council has to decide on a project and the expenses for that project. And then number two, council has to approve a budget transfer of the funds from the general fund to the capital projects fund. So it's actually budgeting this money isn't like saying, oh, hey, let's go spend whatever we want whenever we feel like it. There's there's still a process, but this is just telling the state and your residents that there's a possibility that you're going to spend those ATE funds on capital projects.
Can I interject on that one, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I I I sent Dennis an email earlier, I think today or yesterday. I think we've got to do, in my opinion, do the CIP. As we would approve by the five people here. And simultaneously with the budget because you could then allocate the money. Where we anticipate the CIP needs are.
You can do it that way. In this case, because this.
Okay, the CIP. Was put together by staff and then there was a budget committee that included a couple council members. But I think we got it at those individual meetings.
Right.
It hasn't done, but we haven't processed it.
Right, and so we can we can.
I have a process to do well, because. I I think Dennis provided this with those five options. And I appreciated that. And I think we all responded. I hope we all responded on what our priorities were. I think we had we had to look at those and put them where the council feels they ought to go of those five.
Mike, I'd really like to interject that I think we should keep the CIP separated from the budget process. Because the CIP doesn't have to be approved before the budget gets.
I understand that. I understand.
Okay.
Putting your budget together, you're still allocating the money various places.
And. Right.
So. It is a budget item. I don't care if you can change it later or not. You can change the whole budget later too by amending it, but that isn't my point. It gives, I think it gives some guidance. For the budget, the entire budget, because it's a big thing, the CIP. And I think it gives some guidance for it. So that's my that's my thinking. I'm not. Going to hold anything up as a result of that, but to me, it's a. Hands-together process. I realize it can be changed, can be changed. But I think, you know, we were asked which which combination we would like and that kind of thing. So I think we've got it. Dennis has a handle on what the council thinks. And so to me, I don't know why it couldn't be done to help make the budget. When you on the 15th to reflect an updated CIP. So that's just my thinking. I think it's good for the public to see that. And I would prefer it that way. I don't know about anybody else. Because as it stands now. You know, and I'm going off on a soapbox a little bit, but you know, the most devastating destruction this city has the possibility having is floods. And it's going to happen. It's not a matter of is it going to happen? It's when it's going to happen. And and so. That has to be dealt with. And I think and I was talking with another councilor today about that that item. We need to get after a plan on that. I mean, that that's going to take a ton of money to do something there. And I don't know, I'm not speaking to you necessarily Rochelle or Dennis or.
Speaking to the council. But I could I jump in?
Yeah.
You're going to say.
The list that council member LaFredo speaking to, certainly Rochelle and I are pretty smart. We know our audience. So so we have heard comments. We also monitor social media so we know what's out there and what the discussion is about. So regardless of which direction the council chooses, whether it's flood remediation in the future. Whether it's assigning some of that money to a future road project, whether it's continuing on with a partial list of park projects we have. Those would all remain capital. Budget items. And so there would be absolutely no change to the budget form that Rochelle has prepared. Regardless of what the council chooses to do. In fact, the council could choose to do all three of those infrastructure concepts. In addition to reducing the levy and it would change nothing on the forms for the budget. So that's why Rochelle, I think, is speaking about kind of decoupling the two. It's good to do the CIP and the budget together so that we understand how they're going to fit at some point. But if the council decides they want to take some more time and talk about these items. That doesn't necessarily mean that the budget adoption will be held up. It means that you will basically be putting a sharp point on your pencil for capital investment. Down the road and it all works together with the process. Okay, so. And if there's nothing that's on that list, if there's something completely different, Mike, you're right, we could change. And if there's nothing that's on that list, if there's something completely different, Mike, you're right, we could change the budget later. We could do a budget amendment and say, this is some brand new concept that the council agrees on that they want to pursue. And we could make the budget work that way.
I guess I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying or Rochelle. But in, in my mind, when you're building a budget. You know, any road will get you there to the bottom line, if you don't know where you're going. And so the road with the capital improvement plan will help you have a destination. Mind, I'm not arguing it, you know, I'm ready to stop. And as far as social media is concerned, a lot of our people Windsor Heights don't, don't have any social media contact period. So. I, I, I would just say talking with people is my best way. Visiting with people is my best way of kind of getting the tone of the city. But I, I'm going to, I will stop there. I'm not arguing with either one of you. But I am speaking what I think the process should have, how it should have been done. To bring the two things together. So that we knew what our goals were, and that's what it boils down to. Okay, I'm out.
I did also want to record, or just to say that we did budget for ERP purchases this year, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So I think some of you were going to be happy about that one, I hope, that we're budgeting for ERP. And then, um, we did also budget nine hundred and forty thousand dollars for future street projects. That was money that you guys had set aside in twenty eighteen. It was ATE funds that you set aside for future street projects, so we budgeted that as well. There's some overlay projects, some PCC patching projects. And then we budgeted lost, I mean, a total of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand for the library, the community center. For liability insurance, the equipment revolving plan, and then a future trail connection. So, um, does anyone have any other things they would like me to expand on regarding the budget?
Rochelle, just a quick question. You said you had three hundred and. Whatever you, fourteen was that, you said that was for the RP, the ERP, but you just, but I'm looking here and the ERP says four eighty. Is that, are those two different numbers that I'm not?
Yeah, ERP is actually three, three hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and then. I'm trying to think, the equipment revolving, oh, I'm sorry, the purchases, I'm sorry, the purchases are separate. So we have actual purchases of three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars this year as expenses. And then we're actually funding the revolving, equipment revolving plan, four hundred and eighty thousand for future purchases. Sorry, I should have explained that a little better.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. So it's not that, that, so we don't have the money in the ERP today. For the purchases, so we built those into our budget, right? So I thought our goal was to, is that what we did last year as well? Can you remind me?
Well, we actually didn't do any of that last year. We're going to do it in a budget amendment in the next month. And we will fully fund that ERP, so it will actually be fully funded with, with a budget amendment.
Okay.
So the funds are there.
The funds are always there. Quick question. So the, are you saying that the items that we've already approved? That because they were in our ERP for as planned, that we have already approved. But we had, didn't allocate any dollars for, we need to come back in and do a budget amendment for?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I would have liked to know that before we got to this point, but thank you for clarifying that.
That's okay, and those are actually, um, that's, we're going to utilize lost funds. It was in last year's budget. And so it wasn't last year's budget. It just hasn't been transferred yet. The funds haven't been transferred yet.
That, so thank you, thanks for that clarification. That, that helps me. That's, I, that's a little bit more palatable. Thank you. And then, so then for this next year, so really equipment purchases, we're looking at. A total of seven hundred, almost, well, actually over eight hundred thousand dollars. Between what we're adding into the ERP for future purposes, purchases plus the purchases we're going to make in the coming fiscal year. Okay, I just want to make sure, right? So million or, yeah, eight hundred. Okay, thank you.
It, it really is an excellent way to make sure you have what you need for future. So it's, it's really.
I know, I know it's a better way to budget. I, I.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any further questions on proposed budget discussion?
Regarding the. A few increases, it looks like, at least according to our, the papers that we got. The budget sheet. So just looking at a few different things, like for example. Public Works expenditures, actual twenty twenty was six hundred and twenty-four thousand. Two hundred and ten dollars, now nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is being budgeted. Just for a summary of what is the three hundred thousand dollar increase for.
And Dalton, I don't know if you're on. Do you want to, I can pull your budget page, page.
Yep, I'm here. So the actual dollar change on budget versus budgetage was. Three thousand one hundred and thirty-five thou, three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Public Works gets a little weird because the wages are paid out of. A combination of sanitary sewer, what will be the forestry, streets, snow removal, parks, community center. And. There's one more, I can't remember. And so, um, in the past, the city has always over budgeted on that, just because we're not sure. Exactly where those, where the time is going to be spent. So every pay period, my employees. Track their time and then it's paid out of the respective lines. And we have to do that because those are all restricted funds. And then they also carry different rates for workers' comp insurance. But now there isn't a three hundred thousand dollar increase in, in budgeted expenses. It's a three thousand dollar increase this year, Mike.
Then what am I looking at at line twenty-one? Rochelle, I guess I'll ask you.
You're looking at actual.
I'm sorry, line, line twenty-two, line twenty-two.
Because you're comparing, um, actual twenty-two to, um, budgeted twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. I, no, I understand that. I'm just.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to be sure we're on the same page.
Yes, yes, I, I understand what I'm reading. I am, I am trying to understand the difference in the numbers. And so Dalton is telling me that it's a three thousand dollar increase. Is that right?
It actually looks like a much bigger increase than that.
It, it looks like it's approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Did I just miss in the explanation of what I was given?
Are you talking about actual expense or budgeted expense?
I'm, I'm talking about budgeted expense, Dalton. And if you're telling me that it's because some other, there's, you know, consolidation from other. Lines tend to this one, I guess I'll understand that, but yeah, that's, that was what I was like. For instance, roads, bridges and sidewalks. In twenty twenty, it was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now it is five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. What is that reason for that budget increase?
I mean, I'm getting to this page here, Mike. Give me a second.
But don't, don't forget, Mike, that you're actually looking at the actual numbers for twenty twenty is the three hundred and seventy-five thousand. What's budgeted for twenty twenty-one is five hundred and fifty-one thousand. And the budget for twenty-two is five hundred and twenty-one thousand.
I, I understand that we often do not spend what we budget. And sometimes we spend more than what we budget. I, I am just trying to get a grasp on what that significant increase is for. For, for that line, that being roads, bridges and sidewalks. And then snow removal back in twenty twenty was one ninety-five, and for this year it is three oh-six. I'm just trying to understand that.
Gotcha.
So, again, that's the.
Approach, instead of trying to dig through paperwork today, and I'm sorry that we're not prepared, but. Let us put that, let Rochelle put that information for the council together in an email as a follow-up to tonight's discussion. So that you can see the breakdown of that increase for Public Works.
How will the residents, then, how will the residents be able to see this breakdown then? I'm just kind of curious, just for transparency reasons, I'd like to at least make sure that we're all on the same page. Because obviously, there's something going weird here.
I actually don't.
There isn't anything going weird. We just don't have the information at our fingertips tonight, so we'll get that for you. Like, we could post an addendum on the website for the budget, so that you could see the breakdown.
Yes.
That's fine, that's fine with me, Dennis, and as long as it can be posted. And then there's further conversation in a meeting such as this one to give people an idea of what that increase is for.
Absolutely.
But that being Public Works is sort of the one, I didn't want, I don't want to go, you know. Increase. And then general government, um, you know, looks like, I think, I went back to twenty nineteen. It was budgeted at seven hundred and three thousand dollars and now it's up to eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, um, just those, those two increases for those two departments. I'm just trying to understand the reasons for those increases.
And Mike, I, I want to clarify, I thought you were talking about Public Works in whole, like the seven department budgets that I kind of touched. So the net change in those seven departments is three thousand dollar increase, so I was not tracking on the sheet, so.
Okay, well, that's, 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 just, just, I was going to say, just, just a miscommunication there.
Sure, yeah, yep, so, Public Works, like, to the layperson, Public Works is all the departments I touch. But when Rochelle is touching it, Public Works is specifically road use money. So that was kind of where the miscommunication came, so I apologize for that.
Sorry, I'm sorry, that's true.
Get back to, I think, I think I get what you're asking, and so if we can avoid. Maybe that addendum I'd like to, if that's all right, Dennis. So the, the actual expense. Let's just say line, you want to say line twelve there? Yep, so the actual in twelve is three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and then budgeted is five hundred and twenty. And so, um, wages and wages for road use come out of that. So we, we budget pretty heavy on the wages, obviously, don't just pay it out. But we got to make sure that the money is there in case the requirements of the job put the labor force on that, that fund. So that we can fund our operations that way. So that's, that, I think that's in large part how we continue to accrue pretty large, and Rochelle, stop me if I'm wrong here. But I think that's how we kind of continue to accrue pretty large fund balances on our utilities and our road use. Is because we're pretty conservative with our operating budget, which goes into the road use reserves, which we then use for. You know, we can use it for projects, or you can do the ERP with it, or really whatever you want, so, is that kind of cleared up?
Just being overly conservative with budgeting explains it to me.
Yeah.
But if that, if, if the further detail could be provided as far as those questions go, I would, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Yep.
And then, uh, my second question, Dennis, um, you had given us sort of a scenario, a number of scenarios where. You talked about lowering the levy by the, the one, the one dollar. Rochelle, can you tell me what does fifty cents look like?
Sure, um, it looks like fifty cents, um, which. Fifty cents, I actually did it, I did it to fourteen, so it's forty-seven cents. I did it, I just did straight across fourteen. That would cost the city, that would be, using our reserves would be two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And you said we have what?
Six hundred and eighty-four thousand. And if you do that, like, say a two hundred thousand dollar home, if you lower the tax rate to fourteen dollars. That would say, that would be a decrease in tax dollars of about fifty-four dollars. Um, I could tell you, even if you went to, instead of fourteen, you went to thirteen seventy-five. That would cost the city three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that would lower a tax rate of someone on an assessed value of two hundred thousand to eighty-two dollars.
You know, when, when they, I think when most people see their tax bill. They seldom, at least the people that have complained to me. They're looking at the bottom line, not where the levies are for each of the different entities. So I think. You know, you're giving what the city levy would be lowered by, correct?
Right. That's the only thing I'm giving is what the city.
Be it. So.
Exactly, and we.
I'm not making any judgment here, but I.
No, no.
We can do it, we can do it.
Right, and we do have to remember, and anyone listening has to remember, what we're talking about is the city's portion, which in most cases. Is about one, is one-third of the total tax levy. So there's sixty-four percent that we can't, we have no control over.
And, and you know those, that circle graph that Chad put out, kind of a pie graph. Is pretty enlightening. Look, look at the impact of Des Moines schools versus the West Des Moines schools.
Yes.
It's dramatic. And, and so, uh, just a caveat. I, I think we, if we lowered the levy for the city, which I'm not objecting to, I'm not objecting to it. But it certainly, we need to make sure that citizens know what we're doing versus what the rest of the levies are. And so I think that'd be good to get that out, Rochelle, the, the.
We could definitely put that pie chart out on the Facebook page or on the website, Facebook page, we could do it all over.
Yeah, I think that would be wise, especially if we, when we get the levy, if we want to lower it, then let's do it. And as Mike suggested, or has suggested, but asked you for different amounts to lower it by. I'm all for, I'm all for doing some of that.
I don't want to slow this conversation down, Rochelle, but do you want that pie chart shown for a second on the screen?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Chad. That would be fantastic. Chad is amazing at Excel, let me tell you. This guy is amazing.
Amazing in a lot of things.
Yes, he is. He absolutely is.
Now, do we know the levies of all these parts right now?
No, we do not.
This is kind of guesswork.
Well, and they have the exact same process that we have. They have until the end of March.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
Can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this first one is the percentage breakdown for the De, uh, Des Moines School District. And like Rochelle said, it's not the, these are the numbers from last year, but you can see the percentages, or from the current fiscal year, I guess. And then this is the West Des Moines School District breakdown.
And I'm guessing both school districts will increase their levies.
I haven't talked to either one, um, to know what they're going to do.
Well, just read the papers.
Yeah, that, yeah, I know. They're in the middle, right in the middle of all that right now, just like we are.
They're both losing enrollment, so they get fewer tax dollars.
Right.
Anyway, okay. Mike Jones has got the floor.
Well, I, I'll, I'll just finish with my long line of talking. I don't think it's unreasonable for us to entertain. I, I, I recognize that it, it may only be only eighty-two dollars. Um, and the fact that. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, with the, the number about lowering it to fourteen dollars, I recognize that's not a. A grandiose amount as far as what people may have to pay due to the fact that we're only a third of the taxing entities that they're being taxed for. But, um, I would ask us as the council to consider that. Knowing that, you know, there is this increase in valuations, even though I think Rochelle, you said that it, it only, I guess, gains the city. What, you say thirty-five thousand dollars?
Thirty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Okay. All right. Well, that's just my proposal, I'm just one guy.
Like that would lower it to $14, you're saying?
Yes.
14.
Why don't we make it 1399?
Um, no.
I'm just getting carried away, I'm getting tired, I guess.
And also, I, I will interject that 14.00000 is probably impossible. It will be 14.0128910, whatever, just so you guys are aware.
Let's move on.
And so, can, can other members of council, what are your feelings towards the rate going to 14?
This is Teresa, I just have a few questions, so I just want to verify, the budget did go before Budget and Finance Committee, correct?
It did.
And so, miss, the two Mr. Joneses, I believe, are on that committee, can you? I guess I'm confused by all the questions now, or if we, you can give us your thoughts or recommendations. Or did you guys talk about a levy reduction in Budget Committee, or did you approve the budget? Can I, I, I would like the, I would like the two council members to give us perspective on the discussion at the committee.
Well, sure Theresa, as far as the discussion that we had. There wasn't an opportunity to have any feedback from citizens. So, it wasn't until recently with the posting publicly of this budget. That I actually heard from people, as far as what they wanted, not only that, we didn't know what the valuations were. So, there's been a quite a great deal of information that has been gleaned between that time and now.
So, we have, you, but you approved the budget out of the Budget Committee at that time?
That's right, we did.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? If not, we'll move on to setting a time and place for the public hearing.
Motion to consider Resolution 2021-07, setting the time and place for public hearing on this proposed budget. 2122, date, time and place will be Zoom, 3:15, 2021.
Second.
Roll call.
This is on Scaries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is, review the capital improvements plan, discussion only. Comments from council?
Rochelle, could you give a brief summary of how the CIP was put together? And your part in funding that, and then Dalton is on the call and he can go through the. Projects that we have programmed in the draft CIP for this coming fiscal year.
Um, well, we actually, when Dennis came in, we. Came to him with the fact that we really didn't have a, an updated CIP. So you have to remember that we, we've only been working on this since, since Dennis came in. In September, and that didn't even start, and then we were in October or November when we finally started this, got this, got this rolling. So, for us, it's been, as a staff, it's been really compressed because Dennis was new. So if Dennis would have been here, we would have started this process a long time ago.
Okay, no excuses, move on, no excuses.
No excuses, is that what you said? There's always excuses, Mike.
It's Dennis's fault.
No, I think this is a fantastic thing that happened for the city. Now, did, did some dates get put in that maybe have upset some people? It looks like it, can we, can we change anything in this CIP? Absolutely, this is just a base. So, let's look at, this is just a working document, so I don't want anyone to think, wow, I can't believe they put that in there. It's just a working document, if, if council agrees they don't like something, let's take it out, if you don't like the dates, let's change them. That's all, whatever you guys want, that's the beauty of this document.
I think I was talking about it, we talked about it earlier, the CIP.
Yes, yeah, we did a little bit. So this one's actually a 10-year plan. It, it also does include the city equipment revolving plan within it, which is kind of nice. This proposed CIP has projects totaling 2.44 million for fiscal year 22. And as everybody's noted, we've got some different street construction projects. And I'll let Dalton go through all that kind of thing, but one thing that this, I needed this for. Was the budgeting in the future, for future projections for the city. I needed to see, what is it that we need in the future and how are we going to pay for it? So, this for me was vital in understanding where we're gonna, where we're headed in the next 10 years. And what this does show me is that, you, we have some major street projects coming up, 73rd Street, number one. And we're gonna have to borrow, obviously, but, but we also have some funds that are available that we could utilize for some other things. You know, putting 1.5 million into a street is a drop in the bucket of a street project. But when you spread out 1.5 million on a, on parks, it, it, it's a lot of money that can be utilized in a lot of different ways. So that's what we did, we, we tried to do a good balance or a good mix of both things, or all things that we could. But again, this CIP is for you guys, whatever you want this to look like, whatever you want to do, it's for you.
I think we've talked about it enough, Dave, I'd ask you at some point here soon, to let the person that was here at 6 o'clock that wanted to speak, let her speak. Dave?
What?
I would let the person that's been here since 6 o'clock that wanted, take her five minutes to speak on a subject. Get her in, normally they come.
On streets, or?
No, she's up there talking, wanted to talk about the 5G stuff.
Okay, that's what I was going to do under the public forum, Mike, which we're not too.
Well, I know, but it's, it's pretty, I mean, she's had to wait on this, but go ahead.
Well, I think it would be great if the rest of council could chime in on the CIP. Does anyone else have some things they'd like to discuss about the CIP?
This is Teresa, I'll jump in, a couple of things, one, I would love to see, and I thought this was happening regularly. I guess I'm confused because I thought we had a GIS system or some software, or something that we've purchased. In order to put all of the data and information in so we could track and know where, when the updates were made. And when they needed to be updated and all those sorts of things, so when I look at the CIP and I look at the. Project description and the, I see the things that are on here, but the past document with the street updates. And I'm not finding that actually in here right now. Document with the, had all of the street, specific street, like timeframe, or when they recommended that. So my question is, is why, we don't have an updated document from that, so I'd like to know where that is. Where we are in that process of updating that, so we can make educated decisions about what. Our priority should be in this CIP, and then I know this has already been communicated, but I too, when I first got this. Very well put together and nice looking document, assumed it was some sort of a final document. So, I appreciate all your work to make it look nice and all those sorts of things, but I didn't know, you know, we had, we do have a new administrator. We have, you know, several new staff members, and I didn't know at what point in time council had had any. Feedback to this document, so I'm glad we're having it now, thank you, I'm glad that was made, made clear. I appreciate the recommendations, but I look forward to having a conversation with the rest of the council. I think it would be helpful for me to know what is the total dollar amount. Particularly as we look at capital funds available, and I think based on the conversation that I think I've heard tonight. So it's probably close to 2.5 million dollars-ish. That might be available for us to look at how we might otherwise invest, or what projects we could support in this. Which is consistent with some of the earlier emails that I sent. And so, but I think we have to start by having a conversation about where are we with. Updates to the, the previous CIP and that updated information, so we can make some educated decisions as a council.
Teresa, are you talking about the master streets plan?
I am, Mike.
Okay, it has like the PCC stuff on it, that you're referring to, okay.
And Dalton, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so we updated the PCC, PCI data from the NPO and did drag it into our GIS. I mean, do, do you guys want a map of it, or I guess, what is it that you're used to getting? Want a map or a bunch of tables, because the actual document, it's like.
It used to come in a bunch of tables.
It's like 15 pages of Excel.
Yep, I think we, we used to get that.
I haven't seen it for probably over, maybe over a year, and I, I would actually like to see that on a more regular basis if we could, Dennis. Maybe get updates on, on that. More than.
So the DOT did decrease, and the NPO decreased the frequency at which they collect that PCI data, because it was incredibly expensive. So they used to collect it every other year, and I think it's every four years now, or maybe every three years. So, I mean, there, there won't be anything that changes in that between collections. I can, I can get that complete streets thing, update, update the PCI, and get that sent out to you guys.
Thank you.
Dalton, can you also, when you're updating, would you, because when I look at that, it's hard to even figure out what we've already completed. And what we haven't completed, because it doesn't look like it's been updated since maybe 2018, when it was presented to the, the council. So it would kind of be nice for us to know, I know Sunset was taken care of, because I live close to it. But had I not lived right down the street from it, I don't know that, not being on council, not having all of the issues that Sunset had. I don't know that I would know that Sunset was, the road was completed. So that's kind of my thing, when I ask about the, the master streets plan being updated is. I'd like to have at least knowledge as to what we've completed, and then kind of how we figured out what roads are now on this CIP. Because when I traveled, you know, Mariner, Crocker, Center. It looks pretty nice over there compared to what we're seeing on the roads otherwise here in, in the city. So just trying to figure out how we have picked what we picked to do the overlays. And, you know, kind of has weather changed this in the last few years? Do we need to refocus where we are, like, doing the construction? So that's just kind of my, where I was at when I started asking the questions about the, the streets.
Can I, can I, can you make it so I can share my screen?
We're here, Mike.
This is, can, can you see this? Okay, yeah, so this is what we used to get, Dalton and Dennis, whoever, this is what we used to get.
So I think from my perspective, what would be helpful is, is if you can tell us what's been completed, whether it's just highlight a color or whatever else. But this was, these were the recommendations at the time, do these still stand? Or not, and then how do you make your, like Sue was saying, how do you make your recommendations? Based on what's in, maybe the most dire need, based on the amount of money that we have available. Would be helpful for how you're making, for me to understand and how you're making your recommendations, thanks for putting that up there, Mike.
Okay, we'll be glad to put that together, can you tell me, just from my education, how often the council was receiving that updated chart?
I believe we quit doing it about three years ago. I can double check the copies, but I think that was the last sip, was 2018.
The question was, Dave, though, how often were we getting them?
You were getting them every year, but I believe it quit in 2018.
Okay, yeah, it would be appropriate to make that an annual update for you with the CIP, so you can see how the streets are being programmed. And then, there should be a kind of a narrative that goes along with each of the projects, so you can see why they're being grouped together. There is a rhyme to the reason, but obviously we haven't shared that with you, so we'll do that, and then we'll also make sure that's made available on the website.
Yeah, I have, I remember seeing that graph when I was on council, and I guess, what, three years ago, four years ago? I still don't understand, have an understanding what the, is there a legend and how they're being graded? Is there a formula? Who's a pit, who's grading it, whose opinion is it? It's always been my question.
That was one of the comments I thought that we got back from. The Public Works Committee like a year and a half ago, Mike, when we, when we brought that spreadsheet out. Because one of the things on there is like walkability and sidewalk score. And specifically John McKee was like, well, what if you don't want to score it on a sidewalk? I didn't update this, man, but it's pretty subjective, so, I mean, it's, it's all in art. So, I'll, I'll get you that spreadsheet updated, but I don't know if there's necessarily a right or wrong answer. Wrong answer is not doing anything, obviously, but I'll, I'll get that updated and get it over to Dennis, so he can get it out to everybody.
Thank you, Dalton.
Dalton, I guess my question is then, are you, in addition to getting that document out, or Dennis? What are the, are you going to make recommendations as well, based on that update to that document?
Mike, can you pull that up again? I just want to see what columns are on it.
Oh, I can say, it's on our, it's on the, it's buried somewhere on the website, I can just email it to you, if that works.
Well, we know where we can find it, we'll get it, we're the staff, so we'll find it, you don't have to do any extra work. And we will make a recommendation for the council, so they can see how we're prioritizing those. The only question that will be left unanswered will be where you want to set your money. So if it's not with parks, then you'll be able to look on the chart and go down to the next prioritized road project. And we pretty, we thought we had a pretty good handle on that with the way the CIP is done now, you're not going to see much of a difference. But with that explanation, I think you'll have a better understanding of why they've been programmed for FY22 versus, say, FY27, okay? And we'll have that for you.
Thank you. So I know we're not to that agenda item yet, because we're still, and I don't want to cut anybody else short. But as we think about when we set the public hearing for that, I just want to throw that out there. Is do we need to potentially change that date, because I don't know when we're going to get that information. I don't know how much time it's going to take, or how much time you guys need to pull that together.
Well, Teresa, just because we're setting a public hearing for two weeks from now, doesn't mean you can't have another public hearing two more weeks after that. Or even a public forum, or talk about the CIP two months from now, that's all up to you. And I think it would be important to kind of get the ball rolling with, you know, discussion publicly. To set this public hearing for the 15th and to have it, collect that input and then go from there and see what the council's, you know. Choices for moving forward.
That's fair, thank you Dennis.
So was that spreadsheet, is that the complete streets spreadsheet? Because if that's what, if that's a complete streets, it's not going to weigh in any other infrastructure needs like stormwater, since we did that stormwater analysis in late 2018.
I don't think that was a complete streets one.
Is there sanitary sewer or stormwater infrastructure on that sheet?
Yes, it actually says complete streets, master plan at the top, so.
I think, I think Dennis and his staff can go through that and find the right one.
That, just, it might be, so instead of giving you guys an updated, outdated tool, I think maybe. Instead of kind of wasting time, we update that tool to reflect our needs. So, I, I haven't seen, I can't see it, but is there a sanitary sewer line on it, and is there a stormwater line, is there?
Yes.
Okay. So it'll take quite a bit to update all of our recent studies we've done.
Okay. We're leaving it in your hands.
Next item is, uh, since we've reviewed this and we've got some direction to staff. Next item is consideration of the resolution twenty twenty-one oh eight to set a public hearing on three fifteen for the capital improvements plan.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Alfredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is, uh, public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on city business, other than not listed on the agenda, no action will be taken, come to the, uh, Zoom and state your name and address, no more than five minutes. I think the only one that we had was Linda, and she has since left for another meeting.
Well, I don't blame her, actually, because normally the public speakers happen earlier, right after the meeting starts. And I'm not criticizing Dave.
No, I understand, Mike. I just, I didn't expect that the, uh, other would take quite as long as it did, so. We can bring her back another day.
Well, you invite her then, would you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, I mean.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
The topic that was going to be brought up by the citizen this evening was about the five G technology. And Dalton reached out to Verizon this afternoon and collected some information about, uh, information where people can go to find out more about five G. And we're going to also put, pick that available for the public too, so that they can see that that's out there. They can talk about this issue with five, with about five G. And if they want to come back to us, um, a future meeting, maybe on the fifteenth, we can make sure that they are pushed up to the top of the agenda.
Yeah, that would be good, because, uh, Linda, and I know that Vicky, that had sent you a lot of emails, uh, are pretty intense about this, and they've done a lot of reading. And so I think they're pretty, pretty, uh, on target with current literature about it. So, so that would be good. I would certainly invite them back. I think it's, uh, only the polite thing to do, because.
We will do that.
I have a comment.
Yes, Betty.
Uh, the, the other day, um, I noticed that come and go at, um, university in seventy-third. I noticed the, uh, light stands along the sidewalk, um, have cement cylinders. And they're not bricked up like the, the, uh, light posts by the gas pumps. We, um, according to street design, when come and go was, uh, reconstruction, the city asked that they brick those cylinders up. And as a matter of fact, I think the city had to pay some money.
We did.
Excuse me?
We did.
Right. And, um, if you look at it now, I mean, it just looks awful. Because we still, now we have the cement cylinders. Why didn't we ask come and go to brick those up? I, I think it would have a much better appeal.
Betty, I'm, I, I think you're correct, and I don't, I don't know that anybody up here knows the answer of why they didn't follow up on that.
Well, we need to follow through on our street design.
I agree with you.
I'm, to clarify, Betty, are you talking about ours, our street poles, or do they have separate lighting?
And seven.
Uh, is, well, you know, that's a good question. Is that our, that's, is that our lighting, Dave, or is it theirs?
Well, I know that, uh, when they had the pillars that support the, uh, overhangs, those we ended up cost sharing or paying for the brick on that.
Right.
I'm not sure about the lighting. I'd have to, I'm gonna have to look.
Well, wouldn't that, I mean, from aesthetic wise, wouldn't it look better if it, it was bricked up?
Oh, I'm sure it would. I'm not sure. We're in the process of doing some stuff that that may have gotten lost or not considered, but that's something we can check into.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think so, because I don't think it looked very nice at all. It's, um, I was going to comment on the gravel, but I have, I've got to further inspect that as well. They're not supposed to have gravel. Next to the sidewalk, if you'll recall.
That may be a construction issue at this point. Any other comments from the public?
Well, anyway, I, if somebody could check on that, I think it's worth looking at. And, um, uh, I think it would have a much better street appeal if, if they, they were consistent with the bricking on the cylinders. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Betty. Anyone else have comments?
We'll find out and let you know, buddy.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Alfredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consider approval and acceptance of public safety compensation study conducted by Pontefex Consulting. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, we do have, uh, Peter from Pontefex on. If anybody had any questions out, they've had a couple of weeks to look over that report.
Yeah, the, the only comment I would have would be similar to what I had last time, is that, uh, I have no questions about the processes that he went through. It's just the question is about comparison cities. So when you use an index on cities that have a much larger budget and much larger staffs, it, uh, it, it, it looks like it, and that's what it looked like to me. But the, the, the study was, was fine.
Can I just make sure that I understand what we're doing here? We are just taking this in, accepting it basically like what we did last council meeting during the presentation. So we're not saying this is the end all be all. We're just saying, we're acknowledging that we have received it, and now we're going to file it or do something with it at a later date. Am I correct?
Uh, no, what we're, staff recommendation is for council to approve and accept what has been given. And then that will be the compensation, uh, spectrum for public safety going forward for non-union positions.
Did I miss that paperwork in here, that that's what it says? Or did I not read it all completely? Because it looked a lot like what we received the last time, so I didn't really read through the history completely. Because I had read through the history last time, last year.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Susan.
No, go right ahead, Chad.
The, so the, the history portion is, is based off of what you already know. However, if you, uh, scroll down to the, um, basically the last page before Peter's report. It discusses the, um, cost to the city difference budgeted versus what the compensation study recommended. It's a six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollar difference on the police budget and eleven thousand nine eighty difference on the fire budget. And then there's a recommendation from staff, um, to, uh, accept the proposed rates from what Peter put to gra- put together, uh, with the exception of the administrative clerk position, and that was only going to be one percent for next year. So it proposes to go ahead and do the three and a half that was budgeted for next year.
Okay.
We motion to, uh, consider the approval and acceptance of the compensation study. I think we have a motion and discussion on the table, so I think we need roll call.
Yeah, David, what you're saying is approving the study.
With the wage increases.
Yeah, it's not just, uh, it's not just like, I think, the last time, but we just received and more or less the receiving and file. This is actually asking us to take this report and actually apply these recommendations.
And that would, that would have to be a different discussion, I would think, Mr. Jones.
I, I'm, I'm just telling you what, that's, that's what the agenda is.
Yeah.
I guess for me, I'm not prepared to, to vote on this right now. Um, I did not, I looked through, you know, it looked pretty much exactly like the, the last thing, uh, that we had going through. And I've been working on the budget and looking at the, um, the CIP. And I did not look through this, because it really doesn't state here like on the, on the attachments or the general information, the summary, really what we're doing. So that's my fault for not reading it properly, and I will completely admit to that.
I think I read it properly. And again, just as Dave read it, it's, it's approving of the study. And that's where the, the thing stops.
Yeah, the, I think the, on the agenda, it's sort of vague, uh, as far as these, uh, means, so, um.
It sounds like some more, some of the, are looking for some additional time. And so if we can, I'll remove my, um, my motion to, um, uh, accept. And we can, um, put this on our next meeting agenda. Does that, is that work for everybody? Able this to.
Somebody made a, a motion to table. I withdraw my motion and move to table.
Can I just interject, it's just we're discussing. I certainly don't want to have happened what happened to the last study that we, uh, wouldn't pay the bill. And it went on, even though it was done, and then the attorney got involved and said, pay the bill, basically. So, uh, I mean, I, unless there's objections with the study itself.
Like, I think you're, you're not, it, it's about this, what, what this is, what is being asked of us, what's on the agenda. What we're approving would be to approve the pay increases that are in this report. Apparently, not everybody is ready for that conversation and discussion right now. So it doesn't have anything to do with paying a bill or not paying a bill. It has to do with having a conversation when everybody's prepared to have the conversation.
Okay.
Mayor.
Lead item A, Teresa, literally, it says, consider approval and acceptance of public safety compensation study conducted by.
I understand how it's used.
Dennis, you wanted to make a statement?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I think I can clear this up. And, and, uh, Councilmember Skiris, I certainly appreciate what you said, and postponing it two weeks is no big deal. That's no big deals, but I want to make sure everybody's on the same page, that, uh, on the agenda, it does say, consider approval and acceptance. And then, um, Chad's memorandum at the very back, it has the recommendation, and I'll read it for the record, so everybody's clear. Staff recommends acceptance of the Pontef- Pontefex compensation study and approval of the rate increases as recommended in the compensation study effective July first, twenty twenty-one. The unique situation of the police administrative services clerk position, years of service have caused her wage to move above the midpoint, provides only a one percent increase for FY twenty-two, twenty-two, going by the compensation study rates. Considering her performance over the past year, this is not an adequate annual increase in pay. As such, it is also recommended that the ASC receive a three point five percent increase for FY twenty-two. So in a nutshell, we're recommending that the council accept these wage increases, with the exception of the administrative services clerk, and apply a three point five percent increase.
Why isn't there, why didn't their motion accept, accept that? I mean, maybe Chad's got it back here. Chad, where is it back there in the, in the study itself?
No, it's on the council action form, the last page of the council action form, before you get to the, the copy of the study. It outlines the cost breakdown and, and what the staff recommendation is, so.
Okay, I guess I didn't, I didn't, I didn't read that, so that's my mistake then.
That's okay. We can take this up. If somebody's willing to withdraw their motion, we can take this up in two weeks.
I'll withdraw my motion. Well, my second, I guess. One question on this. Does council have any need for Peter to be on the call again in two weeks? Or is it now just a discussion as far as what you guys want to do? Because I hate to, to waste his time if he doesn't need to be here, but I also know that he's willing to have questions.
I'm okay with him not being present. I do appreciate his presentation to us at the, the meeting that he was at and how he presented to us. So I definitely appreciate that. Um, it was nice to see the presentation and to kind of have, um, his feedback and him answering questions during the presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
This is tabled until next meeting.
Mr. Mayor. Before we get off this issue, if, if the council is beyond the discussion or debate about comp cities, then we do not need him to be present. But if it's, but if it is going to continue this debate and discussion about whether this city is comparable or not, then I think it's very important that Peter be there to give your explanation about how we develop comp studies for municipalities.
I, I think Dennis, he did that, at least I was satisfied with how he, how he did that. So I have no problem with that. I just, I guess I just haven't given it enough consideration of budget impact and that kind of stuff, you know? And looked at the positions of where they started and where we're looking at.
And all that information is in Chad's memorandum. If you want to read that, you'll see all those budget impacts.
I apologize, unless others are ready to vote on it, uh, it, it's, I would rather, um, review it, just I haven't read it.
That's fine. We're good. Two weeks, we'll reschedule that for the agenda.
Okay, just, just a second, Mayor. Um, okay, so I have a motion by harms to approve the compensation study, seconded by Mike Jones. Um, then Harms removed her motion, Mike John removed, Mike Jones removed his second. Then I have a motion by Mike Jones to table consideration of the compensation study to the next council meeting. I need a second on that.
Yeah, I said.
Roll call.
Okay, Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Alfredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of amendment to the consultant agreement between the city and Pontefex Consulting for a compensation study to include administration and public works positions.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we were very satisfied with the work that Peter and his firm have done on the public safety comp study. And so we would like the council to approve an amendment to his personal services, professional services contract to phys- finish up the comp study work that we started with the public safety department now doing the public work staff and the remaining city hall admini- um, administrative staff.
Motion to consider the amendment.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Alfredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of July fourth fireworks display and activities for twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion on that particular item? If not, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Alfredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is discussion of the Windsor Heights Dog Park. Next item is discussion of the Windsor Heights Dog Park. Mike, is this one of yours that you would like to go forward on?
Yes. Our, the park's master plan had made mention, or I don't know if it was a mention or a recommendation essentially to create a membership program, basically bring our dog park in line with every other dog park in the metro, being that you pay a fee and you, you know, either you have a membership, I guess. And so I don't think that that's a, a monet, I don't think that's a thing that takes a lot of logistical figuring out. So I'm just curious as to whether or not we would be interested in pursuing that. And I guess sort of why haven't we already been pursuing that?
Dennis, this is Teresa. I asked a few questions and I appreciate you getting back, back to the information. One of the additional questions that I had was, what would be the associated cost to set up permitting or, or registration or pass fee? Would it cost more software? How much staff time? Those sorts of things. How, you know, I think back to our sign requirement for rental housing was more of a hassle than it was than the dollars that brought in. So I guess I'd like some more information about the associated costs. I don't want to have to hire a new person to have to issue because now we have more work and we, in order to manage permitting for access to the dog park.
Sure, and, and I'm kind of, I'm unfamiliar with the discussion that's happened in the past with the council on this. But I will say just quickly for a little bit of background, Teresa asked me a couple of questions about anticipated revenue or what we spend to maintain that park. And what I was able to do was just take how many registered dogs we have in the city of Windsor Heights. And the number was 236 that Chad had. And so being very conservative, if every single registered dog in the city of Windsor Heights got a pass, it would generate about $5,900 a year if we matched the $25 fee. And then Dalton reports that we spend under $10,000 on it, on an annual basis for maintaining the dog parks. So that's some good useful information. If we were to implement a payment plan, it would definitely not be housed over in the Public Safety Department. I don't think it's the right place to be. So Whitney would probably add that to our normal permitting system and try to make that a completely online system. Then the outlying last issue, I think, to keep in mind is policing that, that area. If, if it comes to whether or not a police officer should be patrolling the roadways in Windsor Heights versus staking out the dog park to make sure that everybody has a, a membership card. I'm not sure that that priority would be even close to each other. With that said, if we receive complaints, just like we do with nuisance calls, we would send somebody out there to ensure that people are abiding by the rules. And then in talking with other communities about this, there are, I, I think I sent information to the council about who else does it around this area, Norwalk, Waki, Des Moines, West Des Moines. When people start paying for the service, they start to demand a little bit better quality service. So I would think that going, implementing some kind of membership and payment process would have to go hand in hand with a significant upgrade and investment in that park. Because right now, lacking is a generous word for that dog park, in my opinion. So those are all the issues that we've been talking about since Mike brought this up. Implementing the payment system shouldn't be that difficult. It's just going to be setting some time aside and it's going to be Whitney's time processing those.
Folks, I had membership in Raccoon Valley. I don't know if anybody else did. Policing it was a joke. People would come in without, basically without having a tag or anything else. You did have an issue with different dogs and so on. However, it did have water, it did have bags and it did have a small dog area that you could put a small dog in. So, but it would take a substantial upgrade to get us up to that particular point for the $40 a year annual. So that's just my experience with Raccoon Valley. So I just thought I'd put that out as a, as a thought.
Dennis, when you talk to the other cities, did, did you ask how they police theirs in terms of those that come in with, with a permit and those that don't?
The one community that I did remember to ask that question, they said they're kind of laissez faire on that enforcement issue.
Yep.
And then before I forget, the payment process, you can be very technologically advanced and have like swiper key cards to get in and out of that secure area. Or you can just go on the honor system and issue a little card that people could show if they're asked to prove their membership. So there are varying ways that we could do that. And the same goes with policing that we could be very strict and we could assign a staff person to go down there or we could just do it on a complaint basis.
Yeah, I, 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 again, we, so we don't know what the other cities do in terms of.
Des Moines has coded gates.
Do they? Okay.
So I guess I have a few questions. So as far as Dennis, like you said, my expectation when something is free is not very high. My expectation when something costs me money is high or higher. So the expectation that there would be water provided that the trash would be picked up and taken out so that when you walk in, it doesn't smell like there's been poop there for two weeks. You know, the, the amount of dogs that are in and around the, the place, there would have to be mulched down more. As far as me thinking that I was getting my money's worth out of going there. Then also, you know, we don't, we don't charge people on the tennis courts to use the tennis courts. And yet, you know, we're looking at $150,000 you know, increase or, you know, trying to fix up the tennis courts. But you know, now we're going to go to the dog park and we're, we're going to start charging or look at charging money there. I just, I guess for me, I, I don't know that, that the headache is worth it for the small gain. And I know people in Des Moines, they, they give out their code so they can go into the dog park. Is it right? No, but you know, it, it happens. So that's kind of my, my two cents on that where if we're going to start charging, then you know, we need to start charging for the tennis courts, for the splash pad, for all of these, that, these events or these entertainment centers there at Colby Park to make it fair to the people that, you know, have fur babies versus regular babies.
Susan, do they, do they maintain them really well in Des Moines?
Yes.
They're maintained well?
Yes.
Some cost associated with that.
And that was my next question. So for maintaining this to the point that, you know, we'd actually have to bring in water lines because we don't have them. What would the cost be to Public Works to continue to maintain this? If you're looking at $5,900 a year for everybody to come in and we spend under 10,000 now, well, are we going to add in more costs in Public Works employees to come in and make sure that the, the trash is picked up? There's bags there, there's, you know, again, make it look pretty because we're paying for things.
Good point.
This is under the assumption that we're charging Windsor Heights residents.
Yes. If I may, so it's not so much a cost thing as it is a size. The biggest complaint that I get about the dog park, I get it a lot, is, well, the number one complaint is parking and number two is the mud. And so unless you want to turn the whole thing into wood chips, we do have to close it down to seed it. So I mean, we can make it look nice, that's just going to come with closing it down probably three times during the season so we can seed it and get grass growing. But that's, it's not really a cost thing as it is an interruption in service, so.
I know Raccoon Valley had an awful lot of sand out there, Dalton.
Yeah, and ours is just kind of, you know, our park's just kind of shoehorned into some flood plain that you can't really use for much else. So there's not a lot, I mean, there's opportunity to improve, obviously, but you can put in water, but it's not like you're going to put on a ton of obstacles and it's only so big. Any decorative plantings you want to get put in, get trampled trees. So I mean, I'm not, I don't really care, have a membership or not, but let's be realistic in what you can offer there because it's only so big.
Any further comments? Next item on the agenda is council reports committee updates, Teresa.
MAC will be meeting next Tuesday. That's all I have to report.
Okay, Mr. Jones, Michael?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Mr. LaFredo?
Well, I've got a couple of things that Dave would like to mention. One is, I think the Public Works Committee, Dalton, should meet again because I think we need to get a plan on the road. You know, talk is one thing, but again, I, I don't know anybody else, but that flooding really worries me. And I know it does a lot of people along the creek that gets that flooding. And it's, it's not going to get better unless there's a plan and it's got to include Clive, Urbandale and probably other cities and even the county. And there's, there's a lot of resources besides DNR available to work with. So I, that would, I would request that we do that. And then the other thing I will mention to council, and I've spoken to Dennis about it, we need to get some instrument done that we can agree with, that we can provide him with an assessment before the next fiscal year. And we don't at present have any that we would want to use, I don't believe. And we, we need to set some objectives for Dennis to achieve. And certainly when, when the objective part come in, Dennis should be a part of that. But as far as setting up the instrument itself and the criteria, that's up to the council and, and, and Mayor, Dave can certainly be a part of that. But I, I think that needs to happen really soon. And, and, you know, I don't know the feel of every council member. So I said I would volunteer to put something, a starting point together. And then it would take a work session or two to get it done and bring in Dennis. And, and I don't admit that be, wouldn't be that hard to get the objectives in. Just listen to tonight's meeting. So that's my thing. So why don't you send me an, an email or text if you think that is, we need to do it? Or if you say, ah, heck with it, and it's fine too, saves me some work. And so I'd like to know what you think and I'm not asking you to speak about it tonight. So Dave, I, that's what I'm asking for.
Mr. Mayor. Dennis, go ahead.
Mike, the RFP for the flood remediation report is out and we're waiting for those to be submitted, the pricing. When those, once those proposals come into Dalton, he will schedule a meeting of the Public Works Committee so that you can review those. And then based on what the Public Works Committee decides to do, that will be brought to the council for a bid award. And we don't, we anticipate that their end product will be sometime next fall, September or October.
Okay, Dennis, again, I, I, when I've emailed about that flood part mitigation, I've always said each of my emails that it needs to be cooperative with Clive and Urbandale. And, and because we just look at the Windsor Heights affected area, it probably won't do any good because it'll still flood. So hopefully that will be incorporated with Clive when we know they've already started.
That is going on right now. Dalton has been very proactive in working with both those communities. And in fact, their representatives will be helping with the RFP.
Okay, and that's, that's what we need to have happen is cooperative thing. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm on board for sure.
Joseph, you got any updates?
Just the dark commission will meet tomorrow. That'll be our next meeting.
Hey, get the bow tie back on, bud.
That's a steel photo. I'm actually not wearing a bow tie right now.
Susan?
Metro Waste met on the 17th of February due to unexpected high cost with waste collection. The, and when I say waste collection, it's like the yard waste collection. Metro Waste searched to find a provider for us to use that was reasonably priced. You remember it was about $600,000 over budget when they first came in. Now we're slightly over 200,000 over budget. So it's a lot better, but still kind of hurts. Incendiary sanitation will now provide Windsor Heights with garbage and yard waste collection. There are no rate increases for yard waste being passed on to the city because of this. The large waste containers will remain the same cost for residents. The stickers for bags will increase from $1.25 to $1.50 and the bundles will go up by a dollar. Metro Waste is increasing its residential recycling program by up to 44 cents. We, next meeting, we will make the decision on if it will be 44 cents, if it will be 22 cents this year, 22 cents next year to total the 44 cents. Not exactly sure how that's going to go, but I told Dennis and Rochelle to plan for 44 cents up, increase in that. The rates have to be voted on still and the residential recycling could go up if we do that 44 cents. It could go up from $3.45 to $3.89 a month.
Thank you. Dennis, you get to complete it all out. Anything you want to say?
No, I've talked enough this evening, thank you.
You've done a good job, Dennis. Thank you for your guidance.
Thanks, everybody. Motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Tell me. Second.
Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Thank you, folks. We'll see you on the 15th. For a few of you, may see you before then.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.